Still not up?
It's like it's attempted to.
It is.
Yep, we're up.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, March 17th, 2022. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here for our special session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioners Hutchins, Strait, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. This time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the court today? Daniel, anybody? Okay, nobody wishes to speak. We'll move on to new business. Commissioners, you have consent calendar in front of you. Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
I second with the normal stipulation added to the item.
We've got that on the agenda.
Oh, okay, cool.
But that's good cover. Got a motion second? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action items, approval accounts payable.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Your Honor, I will sustain in reference to the budget amendments in reference to conflict of interest, afford David, local government code, Chapter 171.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Got a motion second? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. No payroll personnel? Just going to skip number one for now. Action number two, the adoption of department ID for use of the mail machine in Commissioners' Office. Mark, you want to brief us?
Sure. Commissioners, this is, I think, a fairly simple matter. I just wanted to be safe and brand it before y'all. But as y'all know, we have a mail machine in the Commissioners' Office that is used by, I think, pretty much the whole courthouse, and that's fine. But as our county sees growth, that means our mailing expenses go up also as they're sending out more jury summons, anything that goes out. And so, it's actually a pretty significant budget that goes with that. I think $140,000 was budgeted for that this year, and I think we've gone through about $95,000 of that budget. It's not the end of the world, but it's a significant enough a budget item that I think we would be well advised if we were keeping track of that better. Because currently, there's no tracking of which department is incurring what amount of expense through that machine. And it would be fairly simple for us to add a department ID to it for District Attorney's Office or County Clerk's Office, whoever, to have to log in and track those expenses so that we can make better educated budget decisions in the future.
So you're not suggesting that we change our budgeting, where we've got it now budgeted as an administration?
No, not suggesting that, just suggesting that we track.
Does that create the auditors a problem?
No, we're going to keep bringing it out as one line item.
Okay.
There's actually three mail machines that we pulled from that reserve account. The one at the Sheriff's Department, the one at the Tax Office, and the one at the courthouse.
You might give us a summary quarter earlier or something about who's spending what or something? Would you be able to?
We can do that.
That would have to come off the people running the mail machine.
Oh, we can get that report off the mail machine?
I don't know. That's Mark. Mark can answer that.
We can get that report off the mail machine, Judge.
I mean, we can't get the numbers. There's no reason to have the breakdown. We got to get it from somewhere, so.
Well, if we have a, if we implement a department ID for people to use, then we can print off reports, run reports showing which department.
From machine.
Yes, from the machine.
Okay, that's fine. As long as we get a report.
It's fairly simple, and it's not going to change our budgeting process at all. I just didn't want to implement that extra step without bringing it before the Commissioners.
Okay, anybody got any other comments? Entertaining?
I would just say that I think that's an excellent idea, Mark. I think that's going to get some control on the machines so people, so we can see and compare who's using it, and if it looks like it's too much, why is it so much, and are they running some personal mail through, and that sort of thing. I think it's a good control feature.
I agree. That's why I was wanting to know where we get our report from, so we could.
Yes, sir.
All right. Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Request to update county policies for standard mileage rates for employees' use of personal vehicles. It's come to our attention that IRS has raised the allowable mileage for use of private vehicles several times, and we haven't kept up with it. And we now have a grant that's being held up because we're not conforming with IRS mileage in reimbursement to our employees. So what I'd suggest and like for us to do is change our county policies on road mileage to follow the published rate by the IRS every January. They publish what the rate that private vehicles can charge for their mileage, and I believe that's right January of each year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So I make that a motion that we amend our county policies for paying mileage to follow the IRS rules as they're published every January of each year.
Second.
All right. We got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item four, the request for vehicle video system replacement for Hunt County Sheriff's Office. Buddy, Sheriff, who wants to? He talks longer than you do. Why don't you talk, Buddy?
We've had a WatchGuard system that's been installing our vehicles for evidently many years, the way I understand it. Brandon can help me with this. He's more familiar with it nationally than I am. But the system was probably outdated and probably due to crash '18 or '19.
'16, '17.
'16 and '17. Well, it's crashed, and we're throwing Band-Aids at it, and it's costing us every time. We're losing video, and now I'm going to wheel around to the prosecutor. They'll tell you that now, without video and audio, they can't, it's extremely hard to prosecute cases.
Correct.
So.
All cases are just pursuits?
How many cases?
Yeah. Nobe, please, just so we understand what.
Commissioners, yeah, we, on video, as a general rule in the prosecutor's office, if there's video that's made, of course, we want it. The reality of it is, and I think juries and just people in general, they expect it, right? The technology's there. It's not that difficult to use. Some of you that have been in law enforcement previously, you understand the distinction between having an officer testify and having that video to show what they actually saw and how it took place. It ham-ties us quite a bit. I think with this present situation with, it's a little bit different. To me, there's a difference between having a video system that malfunctioned, and we don't have it, and then not having video at all, right? And so, right now, that's where we are. We've got some video that we aren't able to access, is my understanding. That definitely is going to have an impact on some of our cases. You make a good point, Judge Stovall, on definitely any pursuit cases. It may be next to impossible. DWIs, for instance, some of us that have been here long enough to try DWIs back the day before video, now that we have that, I can't tell you that, you know, a picture's worth a thousand exactly what that officer saw. And the reality of it is, if we don't have that video when we're going forward, then it really just comes down to an officer's word versus whatever this defendant's word is. If defendants make any kind of admissions, if they're stopped, and I'm not talking about in custodial interrogation, that sort of thing, I mean, just run in their mouth, and they pop off and make some statement, if we have that video there, we have it captured. Whereas later, it's just the officer's word versus what that defendant, I never said that, you know what I mean?
Right.
So I might just, I'm probably belaboring a point we all know. Like I said, a picture's worth a thousand words. We will have fits without video. And Steve, I asked Steve to come as well. He's much better on the technical end of it than I am. But we've, I anticipate a lot of problems with coming up with defense attorneys on the cases. And Brandon, again, I don't want to misspeak, but we have a gap. We have a window that I think there's some video from that time period that we may not be able to access. I know they've been working diligently to try to make sure they can draw that out and get it to us, if I'm saying it right. But so we're going to have to face that. We're going to have to deal with that window there. But going forwards, my understanding is this has been an issue for a number of years. In a county this size, I think our citizens expect us to be able to do that. So that's my two cents for what it's worth.
Thank you, Nobe.
Yes, sir.
Transparency, that's a word that we use now, and that's what I've said I was as an officer. It's sad, but it is a fact. Officer's word, it's changed, okay? So we have to have this. We have to be able to show it. And I have researched, reached out to another company because, and we met actually with Motorola. Motorola has taken in Axon, I mean, not Axon, the WatchGuard system. What has happened is, WatchGuard was a good system, but it was a smaller company. This is admitted by Motorola. Once they came in, they said, kind of the back burner, we're trying to get them up, but we're just not right there. We're getting no service. This thing has crashed. We patched it. We paid money to bring it apart just to pull video off and try to get it. I think, if I'm not mistaken, once we, once this system is done away with, we'll send it off, maybe try to gather more stuff off a hard drive? Okay. But reached out to a company called Axon. We've also got, through our budget, or the money we've came up with, we will, as soon as we get them in, we will be carrying, our officers will all be equipped with body cams.
They work off the same system?
Yes. Body cams off the same system, evidence. Spoke with Axon. This is all a cloud-based system. Here's where you need to probably step up here.
So if we got the body cams, can they go ahead and work as an intermediate solution to it?
Not when you're, not as far as the car stuff. It's a totally different thing.
Okay.
But they work together, and they also have an evidence system that is cloud-based, and they have off, they told me that they have, all prosecution will be offered free a way for them to say, hey, we did this, we need to this, this video of this deal. They can reach up, we'll access, there's a time limit and everything. They pull it out of our evidence, which goes straight into them. So all that can transfer back and forth, and it's offered free to the prosecutor's offices. They'll set it up. So I'll let Brandon explain the rest.
Now, he can talk over our heads.
Brandon, would you go from the very start all the way through, like, earlier, please?
So like he was mentioning, Motorola purchased WatchGuard a couple of years ago. WatchGuard was a good system when it was owned by WatchGuard, but now Motorola has no plans to release any new WatchGuard versions, which means they're obviously not going to be supporting it for very much longer. And with the support we have right now is very minimal compared to what we used to have. So I guess in about 2016, you know, we had spoke to the past sheriff about upgrading this. It needs to be done in the next couple of years. Well, it's now six years later, and we're still Band-Aiding this system. And even the system itself is not a perfect solution because these guys can tell you their officers are sitting outside, connecting to one access point on the roof, uploading all the videos from their cars, sometimes after hours, waiting on that to get done. With this new solution with Axon, each car will have its own network inside of it with the Cradle Point, and that network will be uploading videos as they're created, just wherever they're at, because they'll have network access in their vehicles wherever they go. So this will obviously eliminate all the extra time the deputies need to upload videos. And it will remove the server from our site. So we're no longer going to have one server with one access point, you know, and everything coming off of one server. It's going to actually be uploading to Axon's cloud, which is compliant with all the government regulations that we need to comply with. So it is protected. They are responsible for all the backups. If it goes down, they're responsible for restoring it. We won't have to wait months like we've done here recently to get data. So back in January, one hard drive crashed. When that hard drive crashed, it caused bad blocks to be written to the next hard drive that was the backup. When we replaced that hard drive, it started writing the bad blocks to that one, and then it was kind of a domino effect. All the hard drives just kept going out. So we had to remove all the hard drives. So any data between January and, was it two weeks ago or one week ago when we got the new server up and running, any data between that is missing. We have the hard drives. They can be recovered, but it's about $25,000 to recover the data off of that hard drive set. So until, you know, it's an emergency and we absolutely need the data, we have not sent those off to get them recovered yet. But yes, Axon is a much better system. I've spoken to other counties that use it, and they say that the support is top-notch, is what we're mostly looking for.
How would body cameras download?
So the body, yeah, yeah. Well, the body cameras would be docked. They'd dock them in, I guess, the dock system would have.
Back at the office, Sheriff's Office?
Yeah, would connect to the network and then upload.
Okay.
They're not directly connected to the Cradle Point. I don't know if that's a feature that can happen. We would have to have that discussion with Axon. But yes, they would all be going to the same, same location in the cloud accessible. And like they were saying, prosecutors will now be able to access the site and have permissions to access certain videos that the Sheriff's Office has given them permission to access. So it's no longer coming in every day, burning discs, and sending them over there. So it takes away a lot of the extra work that the guys are dealing with.
I want to bring this up right fast. We're talking about for the Sheriff's Office at this time, but at a later date, we have other law enforcement basically that we're required to have video on stops and stuff like this. And as we know through the news aspect of it, every time there's a shooting or something goes on, the first thing they're doing is asking for video. My deal is this right here, at this point of time, as far as the Sheriff's Office, but you're advising me that you can plug in in reference to possible extra cameras and stuff like that, if required, in reference to the constables. And you say they're elected officials, but they can also be plugged into this also. Is that correct?
Correct. Currently, they, most of them utilize their own system, separate from the Sheriff's Office, but they could be brought in on this at a later date and added to the system.
Also, this is a Buddy Oxford or Sheriff question in reference to, in order to implement this, I understand that there's going to have to be a bill to be paid and all this. I'd like to know about that. And also, I would like to also know how much of a yearly aspect that this would cost after that.
In reference to, before we get started, just.
Let me answer the first part. The first part is for the paying of it. And what the situation is, is we have to, if we approve it today, they're telling us they'll deliver it in October.
Yes.
So that'll be technically in next year's budget, but we got to encumber it to issue the PO. So we're going to have to issue a PO now and fund it, and then carry it over into next year's budget with a new PO, I guess, after the new year. Is that right? Am I saying all that correct? So that's the steps we have to go through, but we can't wait until October to order it, and then we'll be a year out with no evidence. So I think it's imperative that we try to get something done now and jump through with whatever hoops we have to to make it happen. And.
Reference to the, before we get started on the money, just let you know what happens at the end of each shift. My officers have to come in and sit at the back for an effort worse from an hour to two hours.
Right.
Okay, so you just do the math on four officers that has to come in and sit and wait for this download. They should be on the road doing what they do out here instead of sitting at the office, okay? And that is value that is taken away from the public, that is taken away from everything, and this has been going on for a long time. This is not, I go back to that same thing. I'm conservative. I try not to spend a lot of money, but we are at a crunch, and I've walked in on this. So I want my, I want the guys out working. I brought my lieutenant here. I invited him so he could hear what I'm saying. And I want them rolling on the roads at all points so they can continue to do this. This is uploading. We don't have to be in the office taking, sitting and wasting time.
Sounds like it'll pay for itself.
So these, we can get them delivered in October. You said take possession in October. So how long will it take once they hit here to be able to get them installed and ready to go?
Also, they come on-site to all of our vehicles. They will take the other equipment out and put everything on-site at that location.
We don't have an exact date when that will be, just sometime in October.
And they said they'd move on it very swift.
Okay. All right. Anything else? I got one question, I guess, for Nobe. If this, we got this six-month window there, maybe, that we don't have everything recovered. Are you, your office can be able to give us some guidance if we need to spend that $25,000 to try to recover something for any number of your cases? Or is that something fair to ask?
Judges, I understand, I believe, I believe it's set up where there's a way to record what's happening now directly from the car, the machine?
So we're working normal now. We've recovered the server completely. We don't know how long it's going to last, because that's why we're still a 12, 13-year-old server.
But we got a six-month window, basically, you said that.
Well, no, it's basically just from January to March, but.
Three months, okay.
They're downloading now. They're able to, they're able to get their video to.
So we don't know that we've lost any?
Well, we have, between January 15.
It is currently working.
I'm sorry.
Come to the mic, please.
The server is currently working, but like you said, it's kind of put together with duct tape and super glue. So it's working right now. It could crash at any point. So right now, the videos are burning. They are downloading like they're supposed to. I'm a loud talker, sorry. So it is working currently, but it is going to crash at some point. So some of those videos, whenever the system did go down, we were able to recover most of those, but some of them we will not be able to recover. And if it is a critical case, we'll have to send off those hard drives to get downloaded, right? So but currently, it is working, but it could crash right now as I speak.
Well, that was my point, critical ones. We don't want to go spend $25,000, but try to get everyone.
If there's something that y'all actually need, then, you know, we sure need to take a look at that.
So the ones that are absolutely never going to be recovered are the ones that started to upload when the server went down. So it's.
So it's just like one day?
Yeah, so it's a partial upload, and then those videos, you never uploaded fully to the, once the server was set up.
So odds are, we'll never have to spend the $25,000 to try to recover.
Unless there's something in that one month, month and a half window that is absolutely.
Judge, the sheriff and I have visited. We're actually going to look at what cases that we have in that, in that period.
Okay.
To see if there is anything that is, that we may need.
Okay.
I would suspect the vast majority were not going to. We're just going to give those up. But just to make sure we don't miss something that we need.
Well, if you do, just bring it back to us. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I think basically we've been pre-warned since 2016, and then it took place. And I feel good about us acting upon this today.
Okay, now how are we going to pay for it? We going to take it out of capital improvement? We going to move it out of contingency? What, auditors, what do you suggest?
As we talked the other day, we were going to take it out of capital improvement, but we have a contingency amount in capital improvement that will come back on Tuesday with a budget amendment, moving the money to a line item, correct, Stacy?
Okay.
And if the purchase needs to be initiated prior to that, we have ways we can take care of it. Well, we'll get it formally, budget amendment on this coming Tuesday, Commissioners' Court.
Okay, so let me ask this question. If we issue it now on capital improvements, we don't get it, we know we're not going to get it till October, could we then budget it through the sheriff's budget and switch it over that way, or we'd be stuck paying for it through capital improvements?
We can talk about that, and we can go ahead and talk about it in the budget process where we have a better idea of when it's coming in and everything.
All right. I just didn't want to see.
Yes, sir, we will work.
Our hands are tied if we did it that way.
Work any way we can to make it happen, yes, sir.
All right.
Judge, I apologize if someone said this, I just missed it, but what was the total amount?
Buddy, you got that total's $300,000. I think it's in your packet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
It's three? $331,200.
Okay, and how much yearly do you know?
For the next five years, that would cover it.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
We could pay it in two equal payments with no interest if we chose to do it that way, of 50% of the payment, I think was correct.
Yes.
But I think we, I think we ought to just pay for it out of capital improvement and be done with it.
I agree.
Is that every five years reoccurring?
Every five years, we'll have to renew it.
Renew comfortably?
But it won't be 300, we won't be buying equipment every five years.
Possibly we could. If they update the equipment, then we have to update what they sell us.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve the purchase of the vehicle video system for the Sheriff's Office and be paid for out of the capital improvement account.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Action item number five, upgrade of approximately 1,690 feet of County Road 1021 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 1, money in escrow.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number six, upgrade of approximately 1,000 feet of County Road 1094 from dirt to rock, the upgrade approximately 2,395 feet of County Road 1094 from dirt to rock, the upgrade of approximately 2,395 feet of County Road 1094 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 1, money in escrow.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number seven, upgrade of approximately 2,695 feet of County Road 328 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 3 at County's expense.
I'll make that motion when money's available.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Upgrade of approximately 4,555 feet of County Road 3214 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 3 at County's expense.
Make a motion, we allow this to be done when money's available.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Upgrade of approximately 1,717 feet of County Road 3605 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 3 at County's expense.
I'll make a motion that we allow this to be done when money's available.
Second.
Motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The upgrade of approximately 5,904 feet of County Road 3605 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 3 at County's expense.
Make a motion, we allow this to be done with, when money is available.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Upgrade of approximately 1,298 feet of County Road 3619 from rock to oil sand in Precinct 3 at County's expense.
I'll make a motion, we allow this upgrade when money available.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, we got any comments? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session at 10:30.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 10:30. We're going to talk about it in executive session and come back out and do it. Yeah, well, you need to be here for the other budget discussion, too.
Do you turn us off, Judge?
Do you turn us off, Judge?
Okay, see if we can come up.
We're up.
All right, it's 11:55, we're back in regular session. Go back to action item number one, the adoption of the budget calendar FY '22-23 process. Commissioners, I'd entertain a motion to approve the calendar is submitted to us with the two changes, the top two dates be changed to March 17th and the rest of the calendar be as it's written.
So moved?
Again.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Coming out of executive session, under the agenda of executive session is funding for county road improvements, I'll entertain a motion for approval with stating the amount of money and when it'll be distributed and where it's coming from.
It would be fund 45.
Capital improvement.
It'd be for precinct one, two, three, and four in the amount of $150,000 each.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there anything else before the court today? Anybody else got any comments? Anybody online?
No.
I'd make a motion that we approve an additional 150 out of capital improvement to precinct one.
An additional 150? Okay. I hear a second. Be in no second, motion fails. Any other comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you, Drew.
Let's see here, getting all my stuff together.